I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District, to meeting of the Board of Directors of the Silver Falls School District to order. And noting attendance, we've got all seven members present. And now we're going to move into executive session under O R S one nine two dot six six zero two F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. The Board of Education will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two dot six six oh two F, which allows the Board to meet in executive session to consider information or records exempt by law from public inspection. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. Everyone attending the executive session should treat the information shared or discussed as confidential and should not reveal it to persons not in attendance at the executive session. No decision may be made in executive session. So, thank you, staff, thank you, audience, for leaving. We do not know when we will be back. We will open the doors and let you know. I now call this meeting back to open session. Our regular flags are not here tonight, so this is the flag. Please rise for the flag salute.
... To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with original justice for all.
Thank you. And Tom's going to read the Board Superintendent Operating Agreement.
Yes, under collaborative governance, members of the Board and the Superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interest of students, modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the Superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and to direct employees in district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives, to all issues brought to the Board by individuals and district leadership. The Board may only take decisions at properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district and school administrative matters, unless so authorized by Board vote. Communication agreements. Board members must follow the chain of responsibility and communicate directly with the Superintendent when a question arises or a concern or complaint is voiced by a staff member, student, parent, or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the Superintendent or Board Chair prior to meetings of the Board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Board members and the Superintendent recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of Board meetings. When a Board member and/or Superintendent has an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with any member of the Board Superintendent team as appropriate. And lastly, in the interest of public transparency and full, robust debate, Board members will endeavor to actively engage in and contribute to Board discussions and to share their perspectives on topics before the Board. Full participation from members in advance of a vote supports the Board in making informed, well-considered decisions on important district matters.
Thank you, Tom. Next on the list is the Agenda Review. I will take a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion?
Derek.
Yes.
Josh.
Yep.
Owen.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, next is the Consent Agenda. I will take a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All right.
Derek.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. So, the agenda number, item number eight is student representatives. And we have Zibby Cook and Zach Parsons that are going to come up. And then we are also going to hear from our basketball team after that.
Good evening, I am Elizabeth Cook and I am Junior Class Vice President.
And I am Zach Parsons, A S B Physician Site Council Representative.
To get us started, we will be talking about our upcoming Community Night at Silverton High School from 5:30 to 7:00 P. M. There will be leaders of clubs, activities, and some local businesses there to talk about current events. We also encourage everyone to attend our Spring Choir Concert after joining us at Community Night.
Our girls' basketball team just competed in the state playoffs and won first. This is the fourth time the program has... This is the fourth time the program has won, and we are very proud of our Lady Foxes.
In A S B, we have just begun working on Best Fox Ever 2024. There have been six contestants selected, and the annual pageant will be held on May 4th.
Thank you, and we hope to see you at our upcoming events.
Next on our agenda is F F A, who will be going to state next week. Thank you.
Come on up.
Hello, Silverton Board Members and Guests. My name is Jenna Schurter, and I am President of the Silverton F F A Chapter.
My name is David Tribbit. I am serving as the current Vice President.
Earlier this year, my teammates and I came and we congratulated all the work we'd done at the national level. Today, I'm here to speak about the Oregon F F A State Convention. We will be competing next week and traveling to Redmond, Oregon to compete in many different areas, starting with our team events. In parliamentary procedure, we have Joanna Nordham, Matthew Beelenberg, David Tribbit, Audrey Leo, Logan Garter, and Quentin Powell. In our conduct of chapter meeting team, we have Violet Gray, Serenity, Tylee Johnson, Emily Sharpolos, and Aiden Checker, and Travis Kinsey. In our public speaking events, we have Levi Schurter in Creed Speaking. In beginning public speaking, we have Emily Sharpolos. In sophomore public speaking, we have Chase Sotter. Extemporaneous public speaking, we have Jenna Schurter.
I apologize in advance for my voice. I stopped and recovered from the game on Saturday night. So, continuing on with our competitions, in our agro-science projects, we have in Division Six Plant Systems, Mason Snook and Jenna Schurter. In Division Six Animal Systems, we have Adeline Kinsey and Peyton Smith. In our proficiencies, we have Kishen Schurter, who plays first for diversified crop production and ag mechanics repair. Jenna Schurter plays first in ag communications. Brandon Schurter plays first in ag services. Caleb Hutt plays first in nursery operations. And Michaela Rose plays first for specialty crop production. And for co-op quiz, we have David Tribbit plays first, and Mason Snook, who plays second, who are moving on to state. In our chapter books that will be competing at state are Secretary's Book, Treasurer's Book, Scrapbook, and Electronic Scrapbook. And to get to where we are today, we've had to compete at the district sectional level. So, it's been quite the process, and we've been very fortunate with our F F A program that we have. And we are just very thankful for our community and our school support that we have received over the years. And that is the reason why we have been so successful and continue to be successful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and if I'm not mistaken, we have our basketball team coming up next.
You can't just stand, because I'm going to let them take over. But I did want to introduce our team, and then they're going to tell you a little bit about things. So, we're just going to go to Miracle, Gracie Hayashiya Jr. Come on up, Gracie. Brooklyn Piper, number two. Oh, it was like a sick team, had to go home because she was sick.
Oh, no.
Number three is Olivia Boyd. Number four, Marty Wertz. Number five, Lauren Ortega. Number 11, Suzie Epplema. Let's see, number 12, Connie Brown. Number 15, Justinus America. Number 23, Adam Answer. Number 24, Maggie Davison. Number 33, Malia Horner. Our head coach, Alyssa Ogul. You can look at these young ladies right now, and you can think to yourself, they look so passive. Well, once you get them on your basketball court, they're lights out. All right, all yours, Coach Ogul. We do have a short video. Well, let's do the short video first. This was made by Devin Ortega, one of our family.
Um, well, I think the video kind of says it all. One of the big things about this team and this group is just how much we work together and how much they trust each other. And it's been an honor for me to be able to go through this journey with them and help them get to where they wanted to go. And I think it's just important that we understand that these kids sat around a table in November at our team retreat before the season started and had big aspirations, but didn't just say, "We want to win a state championship." They laid out the plan to do that. They had the goals and the steps along the way that needed to be complete in order to get to where we wanted to go. And it's just a lesson that can be learned from all of us, I think, that in laying out that plan, that you can reach the end of what you want to do. And I think that's ever more evident when we're down 17 in the third quarter. And these kids just never quit, and they stay composed, and they just kept fighting back. And I think part of that is just, well, a huge part of that is their heart and determination. But another big part of that is just the fact that, you know, the community and the kids, the school, they showed out for us. And there was no crowd larger than Silverton's crowd for the entire weekend, boys or girls. Silverton was there, and, you know, the girls put Silverton on their back and came through. And it's just an unbelievable experience and one that none of these kids will forget. And taught us more than just basketball, but the life lessons along the way. So, I could not be more prouder of these kids, and I'm honored to be part of that journey. So, thank you.
As a team, we just want to thank the community just so much for just being there at every game. I think throughout the game, there were moments where we could have just given up. But hearing all the fans just cheering for us throughout the whole game, I think that really helped us just keep going and just know who we're doing this for and just leaning on each other also. So, we just want to say thank you.
Thank you. It was magic. Girls, thanks so much for blessing us with your presence. Yeah, just hats off to everybody involved in supporting the girls. It's an amazing game, amazing journey. All right, next on the list is Silver Falls Education Association. The executive team is going to come up and speak to us as a special form of public comment.
All right. Good evening. My name's Paul Scoville, and I'm the classified, or the current Classified Union Secretary. Before I begin, we would also like to extend our congratulations to our Lady Foxes out there. They were great, the coaches and everything on their state wins. So, congratulations to them. We're incredibly proud of your accomplishments. We would like the School Board to know that we support the administrators' commitments and goals to not have any furlough days, layoffs, or other action that would have negative financial impacts on our members. Moreover, any actions of the sort would take away from the education and support services of our students and communities. We are surprised and disappointed that we got this far into the year, and our district is just now scrambling to find a way to pay its staff in bills. We urge the School Board to find out how we got to this place. And at this time, we urge you to not make the staff shoulder the burden of the district's financial woes. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members. I have to lead this by saying, if you hear my voice shaking, it's just, it's the setup. It's the public speaking. I can talk to high schoolers all day, but in this avenue, it's a little nerve-wracking. So, we also want to say that we will email you a copy of our address when we are done so that you can see the facts and figures that we're presenting to you, as well as the sources that we utilize for our address. We want to address the budget shortfall that came to light two weeks ago. We knew that, we knew that the ending fund balance was low, but we did not know we would end in a deficit by the end of the year. We are in an unprecedented financial situation for this district with the looming question of how the district affords payroll in June. Upon reviewing the adopted 2023-24 budget and budget committee presentations from 2023, we are very confused about how we arrived at this situation. According to the Budget Committee Presentation on May 22nd, the projected ending fund balance on June 30th, 2024, was supposed to be $2,022,598. So, we're frightened about going from a projected $2 million in the bank to owing over $800,000. That's almost a $3 million swing, and we can't make June's payroll. The main reason cited for the situation is union negotiations and new teacher hires. However, if our agreed-upon salaries significantly impacted the budget, then the budget should have been adjusted. Our members ratified the S F E A bargaining agreement in April, and it was approved at the Board meeting in May. The 23-24 budget was adopted June 20th, 2023, so salary costs for licensed employees were known before the budget was finalized. In addition, licensed and classified staff are just some of Silver Falls' employees. We also have our confidential employees and administrators. The salary schedules for those two employee groups have yet to be updated on the district website since the 21-22 school year, while current salary schedules for licensed and classified groups are posted. We brought this to the attention of our district leadership team at our communications meeting in February. However, updates have yet to be made. The Budget Committee Presentation on May 11th, 2023, states that administrators, confidential, and non-represented employees were looking at a 3% COLA, but that was not finalized during that time, according to the adopted budget, page 173. Calculating when we don't have the 22-23 salary schedule to compare to is useless. This does not represent the transparency that was promised to the public. During the last two Board sessions, there's been significant discussions about the budget overrun cost. It came to light that the costs associated with passing the November bond went more than $175,000, when only $50,000 was budgeted. The dilapidated buildings have also put a strain on the budget. But the ultimate overrun cost is our fractured trust towards the district's financial responsibility. During the work session two weeks ago, some actions were being taken to save some money this year, including a hiring freeze. While it was just called that recently, it's been happening in the district since before spring break. In hindsight, it clearly indicated that our budget was already in trouble. We have felt the impacts of teaching and classified positions not being filled since winter break. It has caused teachers to work at multiple schools, change their teaching assignments, or work without the necessary support for their students who need it. Ultimately, it means taking on more work and being able to do even less for our students. During the work session on February 29th, three solutions were mentioned for fixing the budget deficit by the end of the 2025 school year: furlough days, layoffs, or a tan. As Scott stated, two of those were not options, layoffs and furlough days. The third option is a tan or tax anticipation note. It may be an oversimplification, but it sounds like a payday loan for school districts with an unknown interest rate attached. It's an advance on our anticipated November property tax revenues. Tans are made to sound like a standard solution for budget deficits. However, after an hour of research, we were only able to discover three school districts and one community college in Oregon that have utilized a tan dating back to 2009. Two districts have utilized them multiple times, raising concerns that this would turn into a long-term solution for our problem rather than a short-term solution as proposed. We would like the Board to look at all possible solutions for our budget deficit and how to recuperate our depleted ending fund balance. Please ask tough questions, do your research, and choose the solution in our students' best interest. If our own household budget were going to end in a deficit, we would have to sit down and look at our expenses and see what could be eliminated or put on pause for a short time to allow for more money to be put into savings. All of the grant funding should be examined to see how it can offset the general fund expenses while prioritizing spending that directly impacts students in their classrooms. It is possible to revise S I A grant funding outside the application window, and the processes outlined in the S I A Supporting Quality Implementation Guide on the O D E website. Other possible uses for those funds include funding a teacher with a library media endorsement, which we need a librarian at the high school. It can also be used for counselors, C T programs, music programs, or instructional assistant positions. In addition, O D E created guidance for districts on implementing the integrated guidance when experiencing budget shortfall. It includes considerations to be made when looking at expenditures and how to get authentic community feedback, so there are no assumptions around the priorities when the plans are adjusted. All of this to say that we are facing the most significant financial crisis our district has ever seen. There has been severe mismanagement of public funds, and no accountability is taken. Therefore, the Silver Falls Education Association will be filing a formal complaint against our Superintendent for his financial negligence and other areas of concern. Those other concerns are showcased in the survey results that we sent to you, as well as the updated results earlier today. You have also been inundated by letters from our members. They are very concerned, and that is not, that's the tip of the iceberg, because there was a lot of difficulty in that. So, anyway, thank you for listening. Thank you for your time. We will forward this to you so you can see specifically what we're referring to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we are going to go into our regular public comment phase. And we're glad you're here and welcome you to address the Board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. Please keep the following in mind. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the Board Chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The Board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or Board members during public comment. Please understand that the Board's primary role is to listen, and you likely will not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board Decorum Agreement. Is there somebody who would like to address the Board first? Come on up, Wally. Wally, I'm going to ask you a few questions. First, your name and your relationship to the district.
Sure, Wally Liereman, past Board Member, and more importantly, a grandfather to some students in the district.
And are you speaking on behalf of yourself or a group?
By myself.
Okay, we're going to give you three minutes. And your topic?
The budget.
Thank you.
So, again, thanks for the opportunity to address the Board tonight. After the last Board meeting, I had a number of thoughts, so I put it on paper. So, I'm going to go ahead and read those, so I don't forget anything. I'm disappointed this impending shortfall has only come to light recently, as it should have been apparent months ago. I hope that the Board will be doing an after-action review to thoroughly understand the situation, how the situation came about, and how to prevent it from ever happening again. I understand the rationale to seek financing to allow the district to complete the school year, and there may be some merit to that. The downside to this is it creates more debt for the district and adds more costs to the district. This also kicks the can down the road and create a shortfall in funding for the 24-25 school year, likely creating a more difficult situation. This is a serious situation and calls for serious action. Immediately cutting discretionary spending is a great start, but is not enough. As noted in the last work session, approximately 80% of the general fund of the district is for people, while 20% covers operating costs. The district has operated in this range for as long as it has been in existence. In order to get the reserves back up to 10%, where it belongs, or even up to the current goal of stated 5%, more drastic measures will need to be taken. It's simply not realistic to expect the district to operate in the 90% or 95% range for people, which is what will be required to climb out of this current budget shortfall. Furlough days and possibly targeted layoffs are necessary. I'm not sure what the current daily operating cost is today, but it used to be around $100,000. Taking a few days off can make a dramatic difference and keep the classrooms as whole as possible. It has been a while since, also has been a while since retirement incentives have been used, which has been a useful tool in the past to reduce payroll costs in past years. Such should be also considered. Significant reserves are necessary for the district to weather poor economic times. I recall during the last significant funding challenge, we were able to use a portion of our reserves to keep the district operation healthy. During the same time, I recall many of the folks I worked with at the time discussing very large class sizes at the high school level in their school districts due to the reduction of staff that was necessitated due to the district's budget constraints. You need to take ownership of this and not be a victim and blame the state legislature or our state's funding formulas. The actions of the legislature are largely out of your control and need to be dealt with boldly. with boldly, and you need to deal with the situation that's been presented to you. Adding more debt to the district and taking minimal actions will not right the ship and make our financial picture sustainable.
Thank you, Wally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody online? All right, is there somebody else from the audience who would like to approach the board? Hi. So same questions. Can you identify yourself, your relationship to the district, and if you're speaking on behalf of yourself or a group?
Yeah, my name's Johnny Farrell, speaking on behalf of myself. I'm a parent of two students in the Silver Falls School District. Board Chair Traeger and members of the Board of Directors, I'm aware of the immense challenge that lies before you as you navigate the difficult decisions surrounding our district's dire budget, and I do not envy the weight of that responsibility on your shoulders. It is with a sense of urgency and deep concern that I address you today regarding the need to close the achievement gap for our most vulnerable students despite difficult financial woes. I'm particularly concerned about comments regarding proportional cuts across our schools. Our district has five Title I schools, each with a poverty level of at least 40%. Out of the 12 elementary and middle schools in our district, five of the six lowest performing in English language arts are Title I schools, with three also ranking lowest in math. This disparity between our highest and lowest performing schools on ODE's At-A-Glance Report is glaring and deeply troubling. Consider the comparison between our two highest performing schools in ELA, that's Evergreen at 85% and Victor Point at 82% proficient, compared to Scotts Mills with only 34% of students proficient in English language arts. Similarly, when we compare Evergreen's 85% proficiency in math and Victor Point's 66% to Butte Creek's 24%, we continue to see staggering differences. It should also be noted that Butte Creek serves the highest percentage of ever English learners in the district, and Scotts Mills ties for the highest rate of students receiving special education students. These statistics underscore the urgent need to address the disparities through equity-based budgeting practices. These numbers paint a stark picture of the challenges our students will face in achieving proficiency in reading and math and highlight areas where without intervention, they will struggle to meet highly technical and evolving needs of the future workforce. Apart from our Title I schools, we're also home to Sequoia Falls Academy, which supports the most at-risk students in the district by offering alternative pathways to graduation. Additionally, students benefit from comprehensive case management and behavioral health services that are unavailable in the conventional school setting. In fact, their services are in such high demand that other districts contract for SFESD to provide those slots to their students. To share figures about the population and show the resilient students who are there, there are 67% who are dropouts or early leavers from the school district, 26% qualify for McKinney-Bento, 42% are LGBTQIA, 83% receive mental health treatment, and the list goes on and on for high-needs students in our district who deserve equitable-based budgeting. I implore the Board of Directors and district leaders to use equity-based budgeting in the coming season and months. As you consider furlough days, reduced FTE, and ongoing impacts from learning loss from the pandemic, let us remain unwavering in our commitment to ensuring that every student thrives regardless of their background or circumstance. That means allocating money where students need it most. Thank you.
Jean, can you identify yourself, your relationship to the district?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board Members. I'm Jean Pfeifer. I'm a design-build specialist of some 50 years. I was on the Budget Committee for about 25 years, most of that time the chairman. I was the chairman of the relocation of the high school in '93 and in '99. I do want to mention, I do have family that has gone through the system, and very happy with what the outcome has been. We have currently three grandchildren in school right now. We've had, with them, put through the system, counting our four children, or 11 children, very successfully. Brian, our middle son, was the Athletic Athlete of the Year, Scholar-Athlete of the Year at Portland State. Our youngest son Craig was the Scholar-Athlete at Lynn Betton, and again at Western. So we've been very successful in athletics and in scholastics in this school. I have been involved with this, as I said, since early times, clear back in the 70s. And I am concerned about the ballot that was passed in 1994, which explained right on it that we should be keeping the old Slater Building to be the middle school. The district owners said so, and we can't just pass it off and say, oh, that's a long time ago. This happened, and we're ignoring it. We haven't done anything proper. Superintendent hasn't taken care of it. Questions have been asked about, why don't we have a study? We don't have it. We have some studies that say it's remediable. Also, I want to say that this is no surprise, this $825,000. We already had communication from within the district five months ago that indicated this was happening, the group that's working on saving the Slater Building. We've had a communication in verbal as well, and so we could say, it should have been known to you folks that this was happening. So why didn't you get it from over here? This is important, it's very concerning that we're not having control over it. Now, this group, you are, the superintendent promotes it, he wants to have Wenaha, who says that they're going to take 23% or $230,000 out of every million dollars, that it would be a bond money, to pay them. So that's where money's been going to pay them. We understand, the number came out in the newspaper, something like 300-some thousand maybe, or 200 had been spent on it. We've got numbers that say it's probably more like 700,000. So folks, if you want to know where the money's been going, it's been going out on a pet project. It hasn't been focused on, what do we here score? We're here for school. We're here for scholastics. So we need to get back to this directive that was in the ballot of '94. The first steps, we should be not spending money for an additional bond. We should rely on local review to come up with a study, like we have other reports that have been disregarded. And unfortunately, we should remove the superintendent because he's not been listening. He's been doing what he wants to do, and he knew about this problem, about the shortfall of funds, before it happened, and you didn't seem to know about it.
We can't allow conversation about...
I didn't understand.
We can't allow conversation about any employee.
Well, you can't allow facts, Jennifer, and you need the facts.
Thank you, Jean.
Mr. Traeger, please. Your time's up. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody online?
Do you have Matt Plummer online?
Okay.
Daniel, can you promote Matt Plummer?
Hi, Matt.
Hi there.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Can you identify yourself and your relationship to the district, and then I'm going to ask you a couple other questions.
Yes, my name is Matt Plummer. I have two students, or two children that are students in the district. In the past two years, I have served as the Silver Falls School District Budget Chair.
All right, and Matt, can you tell us if you're speaking for yourself or a group?
Speaking for myself.
Okay, we're going to give you three minutes, and it's a little tricky when we're online. So Aaron will give a verbal 30-second warning, and then he will give you a time signal. And can you tell us the topic that you're going to speak about?
The budget.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is off the cuff, so apologies for that. I just couldn't sit back and observe. You know, over the past couple of years, many of you on the board, as well as myself and others, have gone through the budget process and put a lot of time and effort and, you know, came to some solutions and felt pretty good about where we landed. And mostly just here to share my confusion. I just don't understand where we are now and what a short time that we've known about this. You know, if there's been a budget decline or adjustments, things like that, you know, those things should be highlighted as they occur, not with a sudden, we're not doing well and something has to change now. So that's all I want to share at this point, is just my confusion, and look forward to this, the next go-round of budget meetings in a couple more months.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
All right, is there somebody from the audience who would like to come speak? Jacob, can you identify yourself and your relationship to the district?
Yeah, my name is Jacob Plotfelter. I am a parent in the district, a son that goes to Silverton Middle School. I live in the Pioneer Village neighborhood.
Are you speaking for yourself or a group?
For myself.
Okay, we're going to give you three minutes, and your topic?
Financial.
Thank you.
The fact that there's a spending problem at Silver Falls is self-evident. You can see the ending fund balance falling year over year in the audited financial statements that are publicly available. It's a problem that has to be fixed. I think everybody can agree on that. But I believe there's a bigger problem here, and it's one of credibility. At the end of the 2021 fiscal year, Silver Falls had an ending fund balance of about 2.7 million, carrying forward into the '22 fiscal year. In May of '22, while presenting the proposed budget for the '23 fiscal year, the superintendent said the following: "It's critical the district maintain a balanced and sustainable budget while holding a minimum general fund reserve of 10% per board policy. Current resources and requirements do not align, and the general fund's ending balance has fallen below 10%. Our goal is to meet the 10% threshold once again no later than June 30, 2025." 10%, I'm thinking 7.5 million, somewhere in that range. Okay, fast forward one year. The ending fund balance from the '22 fiscal year was about $2 million. Again, this carries forward now into the '23 fiscal year. In May of '23, the superintendent, again, sounds the alarm on the status of the fund balance. "It's critical the district maintains a balanced and sustainable budget while holding a minimum general fund reserve per board policy. Current resources and requirements have not aligned, and this must change moving forward. Our goal is to meet the mandated threshold once again no later than June 30, 2027. Without a doubt, our current ending fund balance remains a significant concern." The goal to meet the board policy moved to the right by two years. In May of '22, the goal was to meet the policy directive by June of '25. In May of '23, the superintendent said the goal was June of '27. Additionally, the superintendent stated that, quote-quote from the budget message, "as well as the depleted fund balance, which currently sits at $2 million." But the ending fund balance on June 30, 2023, was only $736,000. Where did the $1.3 million go? Is the $2 million referenced to the beginning fund balance? Why? There was 10.5 months' worth of spending data that could have been referred to to figure out what that balance was at that moment in time. Okay, here we sit today now, March of '24. The superintendent has announced a projected shortfall of $825,000. How did this happen? How did we get here? We couldn't have seen this coming. This is not a fiscal year '24 problem. I would reference back to the superintendent who sat before the Budget Committee in May of '22 and sounded the alarm on the need to replenish the fund balance. He did the same thing the very next year. I say this is a credibility problem because you have a superintendent who says one thing to the Budget Committee in May, and he's behaving a different way in September and October. You aren't just maintaining, you aren't just not maintaining the status quo on the fund balance, you're moving backwards. $1.5 million backwards this year alone. If you, as the governing body, does nothing about this, it's your credibility problem, and that's not good for anybody.
Jacob, if you didn't get a chance to say everything, you can email.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Thank you.
Is there anybody online? Anybody from the audience who would like to approach the board? All right, going once, going twice. We're going to move on then. Next up is the superintendent update. Scott Drew, superintendent, will be presenting to us.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'll wait for Daniel to pull up our presentation. Good evening. So tonight, we want to go over with you sort of part two of the presentation that we gave during the February work session. I want to talk to you about the budget roadmap that we shared with you. We also want to talk to you about the strategy that we recommend as a district to bridge the gap from June to July, and we also want to present some alternatives to that as well for the board. Before I start, I want to talk about our guiding principles in developing this roadmap, which is number one, to get our budget back to a 5% ending fund balance by June of this year, 2025, this coming school year. Number two, avoiding layoffs and protecting instructional days for teachers and kids and support staff. Number three, proportional reductions in savings district-wide, that includes the district office. And four, utilizing our SFSD strategic plan and yearly focus to guide those decisions. This is the budget roadmap that we laid out for you as a board last month, and I asked for your thumbs up for feedback on whether or not you were on board with us continuing to plan for our budget going forward. And we're on the second dot right there, if you will, and the last bullet, which is the tax anticipation note. We already have spending cutoff set. Vacancy savings, we'll share that with you, and reductions of overtime and additional hours. We will share some of that information as we get into the presentation. But we'll come back to the budget roadmap at the end, and what I'll need from the board is some feedback on whether or not you want us to continue to explore the tax anticipation note, or, which needs to be taken action on April 8th, or if you want us to go back to developing an alternate plan. And so having said that, I'm going to turn it over to our Acting Director of Finance, Kim Dowd.
Yes, so thank you. So as I begin tonight, I want to address that we hear you. Understandably, there are questions on the how and the why, and absolutely stand before you and emphasize that we are committed to continuing to analyze our budget to identify the factors that led to this deficit, and we will use what we learn moving forward. But for now, I want to highlight for you a few of the key impacts that we've identified that are contributing to our projected cash flow deficit in June, and I will go into detail on these further on the following slides. Our 22-23, if we can back up one more real quick, our 22-23 ending fund balance deficit is a factor in this conversation tonight. Our personnel costs are over budget this year. Our substitute costs are exceeding all historical trends and forecasts, and that will be spoken to more later as well. And we underestimated the increase in our utility costs increases. We put a significant increase in there. Unfortunately, it was not quite sufficient. So I want to start with trying to address the impact of the ending fund balance, and it's important to clarify the difference between our budget and the cash flow issue that we are discussing tonight. Our budget is going to be discussed until we're blue in the face, and we are going to identify where our missteps have taken place. But our budget is a projection of the revenues and the expenses in an upcoming year. They're built on assumptions and the best information that we have available at that time. So this current budget for this current school year was built with an anticipated beginning fund balance, which is exactly where you end one school year, is going to be exactly where you start the next. It was built with an assumption of $1.5 million. That budget also needed to utilize $435,000 of that That budget also needed to utilize 435,000 of that 1.5 to balance the budget. Per the adopted budget, our ending, projected ending fund balance on June 30, 2024 was going to be just over $1 million. However, after all expenses had been accounted for and the audit was completed, this $1.5 million was reduced to 738,000. And the immediate impact is clear. What we anticipated as over $1 million at the end of the year is immediately hit with that reduction. This is where our cash flow concern comes from in a general fund budget of approximately $53 million, 300,000. The variance is concerning on that. So I want to go on to some of the key budget variances that we have identified. These are some of the specific areas that early in, we have identified as having underestimated our expenses. Our wages and benefits are exceeding our projections after we made valuable investments in salary and wage scales, as well as saw a more experienced teachers choosing Silver Falls as their new career. Our substitute costs have exceeded our estimates significantly. Again, we're going to share more on that. And then while we budgeted for those healthy increases in electricity and utilities, it was not enough. I'm going to turn this over to Dan Bush, our assistant superintendent, to speak more to some of these costs.
So some of the, like Kim's talking about, some of the variances, we are still determining where the difference is between the budget and the estimate and why those are so significant. We have not discovered all the reasons why that is. There are some things that have been unforeseen to us. For instance, paid leave in Oregon is a brand-new program. We didn't have any projections to run off as in terms of how many employees would utilize this new program. We've had 10% of our employees take advantage of this new program. And so in that, we have, so even if an employee is on that paid program and getting paid through that program through the state, we are still paying for their health benefits. In some instances, some of the absences are longer-term absences, in which case we can't fill those positions with a substitute. We have to fill them in with a temporary employee, which is just a more expensive employee for us to fill while we're having, and we're having an increased number of absences with this program in place. Additionally, while the employee in this particular example is not working, we're also seeing this increase in sub-costs. Another sub-cost increase was there was legislation passed, Senate Bill 283, had a host of different variables that came into play. One of them changed the definition of what it meant to be, whether a sub would get a full's days' worth of pay or a half. And so while that legislation was passed in July, districts, and I say districts plural, multiple districts found out about a month ago that that definition change created a back pay issue where all districts that utilize subservices and whatnot have to retropay several from the start of the school year back because of change in definition regarding what is a half-day sub versus a full-day sub. So for us, that note that we just discovered or just got notified of in the last month is about $40,000 to $50,000. So again, that's again increasing on that. And again, that doesn't dig into every, all the reasons why those, the budgeted amounts and where we're forecasting to finish are at, but those are some examples of why some unanticipated costs are causing some of that. So again, you heard some of our immediate steps in terms of trying to save some costs, and I will echo what we heard from SFEA tonight, is that, you know, these decisions, we definitely know create an impact for the employees impacted at the schools, making adjustments and moving people into positions mid-year is, we understand the impact of that. At the same time, this is a strategy other districts are employing that when these vacancies come up, to do everything we can to not increase, for instance, with those sub-costs and whatnot. And so this is just a representation, and these, you know, these represent positions that come up, and we don't always know, I mean, we've gotten a few resignations within the last week to try to figure out. So they're not always predictable, they're not always spread out across the district, but they are opportunities that we're taking a look at to help with this situation. And then we were meeting with principals and secretaries to examine how we reduce our sub-costs in terms of reexamining how we're using partial day absences, reducing floating subs. Those are situations where on, you know, some schools have utilized bringing in subs in the expectation of unfilled positions, sometimes bringing in a floating sub so that principals can have meetings during the school day with teachers and maximizing those. So we're trying to reduce, actually reduce, the use of those floating subs and reexamining how we manage partial day absences.
So again, I want to reemphasize that we hear you and we understand the questions about how we got here. We, again, are committed to continuing to research, analyze, learn everything we can about how we missed the mark, and we are committed to building a budget for the upcoming school year that aligns with those guiding principles that we shared at the beginning tonight to protect our students and our staff. But I ask for a moment that we can look forward. School district payroll is unique. While the majority of our employees work 10 months out of the year, most also receive 12 paychecks. So these 12 paychecks are spread from September through May, one a month, and in June, our employees receive three full monthly paychecks. And what that happens, what happens with that is with those three payrolls in June, payroll alone, not counting our normal operating expenses, payroll alone in June, I've estimated at over $10.6 million. And when accounting for that reduced beginning fund balance and our expenditures that are over budget, I'm concerned we are going to have a cash shortfall of 825,000. Makes, you know, it's very important to us to protect our employees, so we are here having this conversation on this. While the state has not yet released the estimates for our state school fund payments for the '24-'25 school year, I want to be clear that this $825,000 shortage, I anticipate hitting right at the end of June, and on July 15th, we will receive a double state school fund payment, completely eliminating all cash flow concerns. And at that time, that new budget is adopted to right-size the district and to beat our goal of $2.5 million at the end of June 30, 2025. I wanted to address some questions we've had. We've had some real technical questions about a tax anticipation note, and while this may be something familiar to school district finance officials, we need to remind ourselves that that is not the case for our stakeholders. So I'm going to give everyone a moment to read this or attempt to read it. Sorry, I know it gets a little small, but give everybody a few moments to read this and then I want to highlight a couple of key items for you. So in respect of time, I'm going to continue on. I wanted to highlight the fifth primary bullet down on the screen. We'd originally been advised that our tax anticipation note, borrowing analysis, which is prepared by Piper Sandler &amp; Co., we had originally been advised it would be available at the end of the week. It actually arrived ahead of schedule just a short time ago today. We will be reviewing that and providing the board with our analysis. That does include their projections for the fixed interest rate, as well as any issuance or costs associated with the note. So again, that will be analyzed and shared with the board. We also learned that we are one of six Oregon school districts currently slated to utilize the TAN program in this 2024 TAN pool. There was some additional interest in that. However, many districts are citing the remaining ESER III funds. These are the funds that were provided by the federal government as COVID relief funds. Districts have until September 30 of 2024 to fully utilize those funds. Again, many of you who've heard our financial reports have heard, Silver Falls received about 33% per student in ESER funding compared to our neighboring districts. Our ESER funds were utilized throughout the COVID pandemic. However, Piper Sandler has shared with us, they fully anticipate a very large increase in participation in the 2025 pool. So we wanted to share, we had some additional questions about what were the potential solutions considered? What are the alternatives to a tax anticipation note? We analyzed the option of furlough days. We have calculated that each furlough day could save approximately $162,000. However, the impact of each and every furlough day will be felt throughout our community. Our kids will lose critical instruction time. Our staff will be very negatively impacted through a loss of pay and the associated benefits, and our families could be faced with finding childcare options. And finally, we truly do not know the total savings that we would realize due to recent unemployment legislation. We are unaware how the state is going to look at furlough days, and we could end up repaying a significant portion of that savings to the state of Oregon. We consider the potential of working with some of our business partners to consider asking for payment arrangements for some of our very late-June and early-July liabilities. Delaying these payments could possibly resolve this shortfall. However, this is subject to vendor approval, and to be perfectly honest, it creates a negative impact on those other entities. We are not alone in this situation. Our neighboring districts have performed the same analysis, and they are choosing to address their shortfall by laying off staff now and implementing furloughs. Those measures are being put in place for the same reason that we are proposing this tax anticipation note, a deficit of funding. Our proposal is to avoid layoffs and avoid negatively impacting our business partners, but it does require the use of this lesser-known approach. This is the basis for our recommendation to pursue the tax anticipation note. And in closing, before I turn this back to our superintendent, I wanted to share some resources that I've provided for everyone on Board Book. We have published our February financial report, and I'm committed to that report being published each and every month. Our March 1 enrollment update is also published. The email from Piper Sandler &amp; Co. outlining the tax anticipation note, as well as the timeline, full transparency, everything we received about it is available for you online, as well as a credit opinion that was released March 7, just last Thursday, by Moody's Investors. All public municipalities are issued credit ratings, just like we are individually. They look at your financial well-being, and it was quite a process over the last couple weeks to go through that with them. We do encourage you to look at that. They have provided us with an A3 rating. Honestly, they, due to school districts and the stability of the state of Oregon, property tax revenues, they cite many reasons that they feel that this short-term issue can be resolved. They actually have reviewed the roadmap that was presented to the board on February 26. So again, I published that on Board Book. I do encourage you to read that as well. So with that, I'll pass it back to Scott.
Thank you, Kim. So for the board, do you have questions about this presentation? And then I know, Jennifer, it's going to kind of naturally flow into a discussion.
Kim, what's the interest rate on the TAN?
That is in the information that just came in. We have not seen that. I want to be very clear that a note is something that is sold on the market. The interest rate is determined at the time of sale. I can tell you that we have worked with Piper Sandler on our past refinances. Many of you are familiar with the tens of millions of dollars that have been saved on the prior GO bond refinancing, the PERS bond refinancing. Piper Sandler has an incredible history of being extremely accurate and being conservative to the point that we are confident that when we start reviewing their analysis, we are confident that their projections are as accurate as they could possibly be. Again, projections of what a note could potentially sell for in May or June, again, are projections, and I just put that out there.
But right now, we don't know what that projection is?
We did not dig into that analysis today. We have been, you know, obviously wanting to make sure we prepare for this, and we will, we absolutely will dive into that immediately. It actually kind of caught us off-guard when it showed up today. So definitely will be looking into that. I do know some of the pre-research that I did showed that the current borrowing, borrowing rate is significantly below our current earnings rates in our Oregon State Treasury local government investment pool. If, I'd be very curious to dive into that, but of course, our focus was on making sure we addressed the concerns that we've been hearing over the last two weeks.
Kim, I would just want to clarify, so the report you got from Piper Sandler today, you do plan on putting that on Board Book?
Yes, I believe it can be published.
Since we've discussed-
I will verify with them that it doesn't contain, but we will find some information. We'll make sure we can publish, yeah.
Since we've talked about it tonight-
Absolutely.
-it does make sense to me that we are able to-
Okay.
...put it under Board Book, as long as it checks out on your end.
We will, we will ensure that there is information that answers those questions, those interest rate questions, the cost questions, and we will make sure that a document is provided by this independent party to address those details.
I appreciate that. I think it really goes a long ways towards transparency.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Kim, if you could, the unemployment ruling on furlough days, I'd like to know more information about that, because I know that, we used, we used that tool in the past, and it sounds like it might not result in the cost savings that it has in the past, but it sounds like that's kind of up in the area.
So, yeah, you're asking about, there are two situations there. At the start of the COVID pandemic, we did implement some furlough days, and at that time, there was a federal government subsidy to the unemployment program called WorkShare. The federal government was supporting businesses through the pandemic implementation, if you will. So June of 2020, I believe it was, when we did some furloughs and most of our employees were paid by the state through federal funds. Whereas in any other unemployment situation, Silver Falls School District is billed for 100% of any unemployment claims paid for any of our employees. We are considered a reimbursing employer. We do not pay a tax rate, so every unemployment claim that is approved by the state of Oregon, we get the bill for exactly what they pay the employee. Legislation was passed this year that has modified the eligibility for certain school district employees, and now certain periods of the school year, such as spring break, summer break, Thanksgiving break, and winter break, are potentially unemployment-eligible periods of time for certain employees. This will be a huge, huge discussion in the building of the '24-'25 budget. To be perfectly honest, the, I believe we said one point, I apologize, I don't want to misquote that, but in the, what we call the inflationary cost for next year, I've budgeted $600,000 in new costs for this one bill.
Wow.
And that is only if we have 60% of our employees participate.
Okay.
So just to piggyback on that question, Tom, so the $160,000 cannot be necessarily guaranteed because we wouldn't know necessarily how many employees might take advantage of the new unemployment ruling. the new unemployment rules that we would have to backfill.
That's, that's a complicated wrinkle that Tim takes.
That is.
And to Kim's point about the, you know, school districts around the state are trying to figure out, you know, even how do you build an estimate on a new rule that you haven't had to project or anticipate before for, for these new unemployment rules?
Yikes, okay, thanks.
Questions just based on the presentation so far? So the, the sub thing was something that was interesting to me because I've seen it, you know, in my office with paid leave. The sub, the sub increases, I'd be curious to know how much of them were increased because of paid leave? And I, I heard a number, $250 a day for a sub. Is that about right?
Before, before payroll costs, correct?
So then I'd also be curious to know, like, the increase in subs versus like the, almost like, I don't know how to phrase this correctly, but like the curriculum trainings. So how many additional subs have we had to use for not necessarily optional trainings that would also increase our sub costs? So I feel like that'd be an additional thing that would be, probably should have been projected, but probably wasn't in the aspect of like, we probably have traditional data of how many teachers get sick a year, wintertime, that kind of stuff. So I understand the paid leave, that just popped up like bam, can't do anything about it, can't tell people they can't go out, now we got to pay an additional 250 a day, 60 days, that's a lot of money that we're not even budgeted for, just like you talked about for this unemployment. Who knows? My guess, take your paid leave number, probably identical. So, I mean, for a percentage of people using the program. But I would like to know honestly, the sub stuff, how much was basically, we required subs because of the curriculum stuff versus the paid leave? I'm really curious how much paid leave costs. I hope the, actually, the state does like an after-action report on that versus, I mean, I think, we're not the only ones. Any large employer in the state is going to see the same problems.
I don't know if this question's for Kim or for Scott, or maybe both, but SFVA mentioned that the website hasn't been updated with salary schedules for the administrative and confidential haven't been updated in a long time. What's it take to get those updated?
We can get those updated.
I appreciate, I noted that as well, that those will be taken care of immediately. Absolutely.
We can get those up.
Absolutely.
Back on the sub business, did I, did I read the graph right? Is it basically right around 300,000 off?
Yes.
As Josh mentioned, I'd be curious how much of that is driven by almost mandated sub coverage as opposed to someone got a cold and can't come in.
Totally fair question to figure out what things that we didn't have any control over and what things did we have control over? And I think to reiterate what I said earlier when going over those slides, you know, I only presented a couple of examples of things that we, we couldn't anticipate, but that's, you know, to the 300,000, I think there's a lot more digging that has to be done to, to do that. And to your point, yes, we knew need to figure out how the things that we can control.
Yeah, you had the one there at 40K that was kind of explained as far as.
Yeah.
Unforeseen, but we're talking 300, so I was just wondering, okay. And on the furlough days, the, if we, or cost per day, I should say, and savings due there, I know there's the unemployment casts a doubt as far as whether it really would be 162. What I was wondering too, is that 162, is that based on like a snapshot of how we're staffed today? Because our staffing has been fairly fluid with the not filling spots as they're vacant, or is that based on cost was in September or what was used for that?
That would be approximately March 3rd, yes, today. To be, it is current numbers.
Yeah, I did.
So it does have the, you know, seven classified, the five and a half license, you know, it is current, so it does have the reductions, the attrition we've seen this year, but yes. And that also, to be clear, is a day on which all employees are working. We did break the analysis down by, as you know, we have employees that work different calendars. We have our employees who work only on student contact days. We have our, our teaching staff who work in a little bit of an extended year. We have some office staff that work a couple extra days from there, as well as our year-round staff, and so we did break that down by group to determine what would it look like if it was just a summertime reduction or just administrators take it or, yeah.
Okay.
So we do have that as well.
And a follow-up on that, I, I understand the unknowing on the unemployment, but just roughly here, I did the math, is it, if it was 162 a day, is we're talking five days to cover it?
So that is another one of our reasons that we were a little nervous about it. The five days would then equate to about, forgive me here, but about the 800,000. I want to be very clear that this $825,000 deficit is, again, based on the assumptions, based on the information I have at this time. As of today, we are still waiting on revenue promised by the state for certain grants on July 1 of 2023. We have not yet been awarded the funds. We've been awarded the grant and been guaranteed that the funds will come, but they have not yet been released by the Department of Administrative Services. The state is extremely behind this year on releasing funds. We have been front-loading, if you will, many of our grants all year long. That has made projections extremely difficult. And of course, stepping in, into this role officially, technically today, being my first day full-time in this, trying to, you know, step into, in essence, a painting that was started, and I'm trying to figure out where it was going and analyze that. I am, I am learning a lot every single day and just commit to continuing to be as, as transparent as we can moving forward.
I can only imagine.
Do you know approximately how much you expect to get from the state that they have not given at this point?
I would need to do an analysis on that. We, yeah, we, we were very fortunate that one of our largest funding streams, the integrated guidance funds for SIA as well as High School Success were just released very recently. So we were able to nicely, nicely claim, claim that, you know, when we're talking, you know, over $4 million that, that of grant funds that we'd been fronting since July 1. That was, that was very difficult, you know, to keep track of, but we'd be happy to identify which grants were still.
That is totally fair. Thank you.
I can jump in and just say the Early Literacy Grant is one that has been completely, the funds haven't been released. We just heard from the state feedback on our application today, actually, and that is $238,000.
Thank you.
I'm glad this discussion turned to the 825 and, and that projection because it seems to me that if we do go out for a TAN, that it would be prudent that we're conservative in our estimates rather than overly optimistic and don't solve the problem with, with that action.
So I, I am, you know, definitely concerned again, back to that 825. That is, that is with everything falling into place. That is with a boiler not going out and needing to drop $300,000 on it as we just did. I shouldn't say just, but prior year. You know, there, this is a very, very uncomfortable place to be, and the tax anticipation note, in my opinion, is the lowest risk to protect the long-term financial security of Silver Falls.
If, if we were to go out for a TAN, when we do receive that large double payment.
Yes.
Where does that place our, our budget balance after having received that and paid off the TAN?
So I want to step back and clarify, we have not received any estimates for what our state school fund will be in 2425. By law, they were required March 1. On March 4th, the state sent out a estimate and said, unfortunately, we were unable to capture poverty weights and those sort of things. So, yeah, we hope to have something to you by the end of March is what the state notice was. As far as the paying off the TAN statement, I want to be clear that this is a note with a fixed period of time. So I do know through a phone or a video meeting I had last week with Piper Sandler that the TAN proposal is going to be for a six-month TAN, meaning it would mature December 31, 2024.
I see, so it can't be prepaid, in other words?
It cannot be prepaid. What I want to be clear on is if our cash flow deficit is eliminated July 15th, whatever that TAN amount is, which again is part of this analysis that Piper Sandler does for us, at times, they may suggest that you borrow significantly more than you need to allow it to sit in an investment vehicle to earn interest to cover your costs of the borrowing. It's, that's why we did not want to jump into the analysis yet today. The, the statute around a TAN states that you may borrow the amount of your deficit plus 5% of your prior year general fund expenditures. In theory, we could borrow approximately $3.3 million.
So if we want to get in the interest rate arbitrage vision this weekend?
So if we can borrow at X and invest X plus something, that is part of what Piper Sandler and the actuaries and the bond council look into for us, and that is why we have experts above my level of issuance. Yeah, we will be reviewing the details.
Kim, I just want to take this time to just, I know you're feeling a lot of pressure, a lot of heat, and I know you stepped into this, and I just want to say I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's very difficult. You know, I grew up here, been here, you know, a long time, so to, to see these, these difficulties is, is devastating to me, and I look at it as the biggest challenge, you know, we've, we've ever, biggest challenge we've ever faced, you know, here. And, and whether it's the biggest one or not, it's, it's my biggest challenge, and I am just committed to 100% transparency in everything we can do to rebuild the trust and, and resolve this. It has to be fixed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, though.
Yep.
Any other questions? I mean, we can still ask, Kim, if we start a discussion and we want more questions, but before we start a discussion, is there, are there any questions?
Yeah, Kim, I just want to thank you for, again, your continued work on this, and you and Steve spent an hour and a half plus the other day with me with all my questions. So I know you were already busy and you made time, so thank you. It was, it was helpful after the last meeting, so thank you.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. I didn't even, I just got to look at the enrollment report myself. I'll just throw my own.
Oh, okay, yeah, because the enrollment is on our board book.
Yeah.
So if it's not against agenda policy, I'm gonna go ahead and speak to that. We did question this when we saw it. We did see a reduction in our enrollment, and upon further review with our, our data teams, our data specialists and student data coordinators, good news is, sounds like we had some early graduates that were able to finish their school year early. Unfortunately, that reduces our enrollment, which then impacts our funding. So, yeah, I did want to address that. We, I believe it's a drop of 14. I apologize, but it's in the, in the teens.
So we get basically a prorated amount for them this year if they graduated, if those graduates, graduates say at first semester, we, we were getting funding up to that point for them, and then we don't get it going forward? How does that work?
You know, so they capture it by quarters.
Do they lock in October?
I would love to look into that and confirm that for you rather than.
Yeah, because if they're in school with us in October, which is usually when they capture it.
Quarter one ADM, they would have been in, but quarter two, yeah, well.
So the payment is based on those reports, right? Those ADM reports?
They're called ADM reports for average daily membership, which is our enrollment reporting to the state of Oregon.
And thank you for the people who complete those reports.
Absolutely.
Josh, you got what you need?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Thank you. And thanks, Kim.
So now it's our chance to discuss the roadmap. As Scott mentioned, he's asking for us to either commit to what we committed to last meeting. We gave the informal thumbs up regarding the priority of, you know, not doing furloughs, not doing layoffs, and then, you know, the TAN is the bridge for the cash flow issue. That's kind of what we informally gave our thumbs up to. We've had some time now to think or rethink, do we have more that we want to explore as a, as a group?
I can start. I've got some initial thoughts. First, kind of just going back to the communities in the room and the information we get, and we'll definitely are committed to figuring out how we got here. And so I think that, I just want to echo, we hear you, we see you, and we're digging into it. With that said, we also have some tough decisions in front of us. Last meeting, we talked about specifically wanting to avoid layoffs, wanting to avoid shortening the school year and picking the solution that is least impactful to the students. And I think that the rough roadmap, again, we don't have all the information, there's still some outstanding questions with the TAN that we need specifics on. There's some questions about what the cost savings of, if we had to look at furloughs. So I think we have a couple pieces of information that are still outstanding. However, with that said, I'm still in favor of moving forward with the, the current plan, pending those very important questions getting answered.
Thank you, Derek. Others want to chime in?
I'll just say, I feel essentially the same way Derek does.
Yep.
Yeah.
I, I just would like, I guess, more feedback. I mean, I don't honestly have the, the brains to understand the risk reward of, for the TAN, the interest rate going more, going less, so I'm going to have to default to other people. I'm a simple knuckle dragger, okay? As far as furlough days and stuff, I would like feedback from the teachers and the unions, what that would look like for me to make a choice of impacting them. If, if they're like, again, I'm just, I need more input to like make these type of decisions. I also would really like to know, like, what we can cost now. I really would like to know what Ed X has cost from beginning to end, personally. I mean.
As a board, I would like us to get that number.
So I know that they said last time that there was another $100,000 we can pay. I mean, that's a, I mean, I've talked about, there's so much I'm trying to learn about how things move or don't move, and it's not out of disrespect, this is not a thing of like disrespect to the DO for the program necessarily or implementing it. I just want to know how much this stuff costs and the additional costs that it may have regarding subs, trying to get our budget back. Like the way, I mean, if this was my budget and, you know, we ran our credit card way over, or I knew that this was coming, like for the last bond, I'll use an example. I knew the bond was going to cost me probably about 800 bucks, 600 bucks, something like that. And I immediately started cutting like, okay, I don't need Hulu anymore. I don't need Netflix. I will do without it to come up with this extra 80 bucks a month. So I'm like, what can we cut on top of that? And I know that the district, they said they're looking at some of the subscriptions and whatnot, but that Ed X is something that just keeps popping up, and I would like to know.
Well, I think, I think that's valid, and I think that's a budget committee, that's, that's a really good time to look at that, right? And I also wanted to say, I think what I was hearing from the SFVA executive team that came up is that they appreciated the district's approach to not having furloughs. I mean, that, that's what, that's what they were saying. If, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I got a thumbs up back there. So that's, that's what they came to present to us. So, yeah, I just wanted to mention that.
So that being that said, like, when do we get a report on that? And then I also would like an after-action report too, like Wally had recommended. Not, and again, I just, we're responsible up here too.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, we have to ask the hard questions, and I got to default to people that are smarter than me, but I know something's just, I gotta, I mean, I want to. than me, but I know something's just, I gotta, I mean, I want to get comfortable with the decisions I make that affect so many people, so I just need better information. And there's a lot of times I ask, I just don't get it, you know, some of the questions.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fine. And for this discussion, I think focusing on that fifteen days' worth of cash flow is really where, where we're at this. I think that everything you've said is totally valid.
So we have to make a decision by April eighth? That's what I was told, for the tan.
Correct.
So we, in that, so I'm assuming we make that the next decision at our next work session?
We don't have a work session this month.
So...
Can we make it at the April eighth board meeting, or do we have to have the, the application and done by before the eighth?
So the April eighth board meeting is the next scheduled board event. The tan itself and our acceptance of, of participation in the pool, we do have until April fifteenth. We had provided April eighth to you as your next scheduled board meeting when the resolution would need to happen, but the resolution would probably say what should, should be done by April fourteenth to make sure it could be submitted within business hours on April fifteenth. I could verify if after hours is acceptable, but just to clarify.
I would add, if we need to schedule another meeting to make sure that happens, I'd hate to be in a spot where we're really, like, this is kind of our lifeline, we miss like a scheduling timeline, so if we need to schedule another meeting, we should make that happen.
I think that we're all probably good enough to flex our schedules for that.
Yeah.
I guess, sorry.
Just dovetail on this, I, I agree, I, I think at this point, based on what we know, but I think we need to know a lot more before we put our signature on as far as the tan, as opposed to the furlough business. It has its unknowns also. And as what Josh said, I think what can't get lost in this, even though it has nothing to do with getting us through here, is we do need to make sure that we have a plan for digging and finding out and getting answers on how we got here. And then I mentioned it, it's been talked about so much, I, I just think we need, gonna say it publicly, so maybe it will happen, and as Josh mentioned about Ed X, what it actually has cost from beginning to present, and will cost down the road if the contract is maintained, because I think it's a huge investment, and we need to know those numbers. And in our talking, it doesn't seem we have that information, and I think we need it. But this is a tough situation for our district, is a tough situation for us, because every situation, every answer is a bad answer to how we handle this. And so we need to pick what long range has the least impact on our kids. One concern I do have with going the tan route and with us not filling positions is what that is doing to us educationally with the constant shuffling around of personnel and has happened and probably would continue to happen till the end of the year, as far as people being moved from positions and relationships are made, and people teaching out a certification, basically, and things like that. That does impact kids, that does impact buildings. I, I think somehow there's gotta be a minimal amount of that, whereas it feels like, at least right now, what we're hearing, it's fairly wholesale, and that, that is not healthy educationally. It may, it may be putting bodies into places and meeting the letter of the law, but, so I, I have concerns there.
So, so here's a question, Kim, and I, I don't know if you'll be able to answer, but I'll ask. So in the tan, we're borrowing money, we're not saving money, we're paying it back.
Correct.
Right, we're, we're covering our short-term deficit. If we were to use furlough days and those teachers took unemployment, when would we have to make those unemployment payments to the state, and is there any interest or penalty involved in that line of borrowing?
Um, so, yes, two things, unfortunately, teachers are not one of the educational employees that are eligible to apply for the unemployment benefit, so that is why it is a fractional piece. Second, the bill for those unemployment charges would not come until after July one, potentially towards the end of July. The penalty for a late payment is extremely high with unemployment. However, I do, I would be confident saying that the bill for that unemployment offset would not come until after our July fifteenth state school funds would arrive. So the, we would have the revenues come in before that unemployment bill was due and payable.
Yeah, and obviously revenue is only one element of the cost of a furlough day, I mean, we have the cost to, to the kids and, and operations.
One hundred percent.
Thank you for noting that, Owen, that's important.
Hey, Kim? Yeah. So, sorry. So if I'm to understand this correctly, these cuts we're making in the, in getting back to the place we need, are we re-staffing at all? Or are we, so what, the stress in the buildings with people moving around or lost positions, are we gonna stick at this staffing number until we get to two point five mil? Is this like the status quo for these buildings for the next? Yeah, I'm trying to understand, like, is there any way that we can get them some help? Or is this what it's gonna be for a little bit?
I think that's probably a discussion that Kim probably can't answer all of that, right?
So I'll just try to tackle it, that, at the February meeting, you know, some of the placements that we have made does not mean that position's going away. That might be a position that's not directly working with students right now, but a very important position, otherwise we wouldn't have had it. But to try to not fill that position or with a sub, so those moves are not permanent and, and, or those positions going away. Right now, it is attempting to save funds where they're at while we build a budget, while we look at, you know, class size ratios to figure out how we're going to staff our buildings, you know, so that we don't want, this is not a system to do every time, you know, and, again, you know, but to try to get the budget as far as staffing goes into each building is gonna have to definitely be looked at. But we're not gonna be, those positions are not gonna be cut without a thorough analysis.
I haven't heard from Tom or Aaron yet.
Yeah, I guess I'm gonna, I'll push back and be the, the, the counter person. I, I struggle fundamentally, I guess, with the tan. I'm just, I'm, I'm having a hard, hard time with that one. I, but, but, but I also see the need that we're in. We're in an unprecedented situation that we may have to go that route. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm still, I still want us to look under every rock, I still want us to turn over every leaf, I still would like to see further interventions, because again, we're, we're not necessar, the deficit thing is, replenishment's a long term, it's the cash flow that I see is the biggest issue right now. Can we work with, you know, like you put up, can we work with some of our accounts payables, right? Can we look at, you know, you know, being creative in compensation? I, I don't know. I, I just, I'm, again, I'm just trying to be transparent, I'm struggling with the concept of the tan. I don't know if that's a fiscal, fiscally responsible tool to our community. Because again, as board members, we have to look at all facets, and that's including our, our, our taxpayers, our communities. Not always about that, but it's, but it's a factor in it. So I'm struggling with that. But I'd like to see more look into that, you know, and, and, and how can we, how can we, you know, be, you know, creative isn't the right word, but how can we be more expeditious in looking into not having to do the tan? You know, can we do something different? I, I don't know, I'm just struggling fundamentally with, with the tan, because I just don't, I don't think it's a really great tool, and I, and I'm, I'm struggling with, yes, we could potentially borrow at a lower rate, invest at a higher rate, and that's great and all, I just, I'm struggling with it. I just, I have a hard time with it.
Here, while you were talking, Aaron, something just came to my mind, and this will be really a can of worms. I don't know who over here might have an answer for this. Is there anything where the district could enter into some kind of agreement with our unions on the people that are getting, which are basically our teachers? And the August check is paid out of the next fiscal year after that date of when we're getting our money in July? And then that would create a bigger ending fund balance on this current year, keep us in the black? And from what you've indicated, we'd have a double payment from the state then in July, and then no borrowing is done. It does mean anybody counting on that August check per se...
Right.
A two-week delay, it sounds like, or maybe three, of when they would get it. But is that even in the realm of possibility?
So I, I greatly appreciate, you know, you bringing that up, Phil, because we actually discussed that at length, and we're actually intrigued by maybe the conversation with, with our associations, because as you said, it's actually not just our teachers, but it is all but maybe one percent of our classified staff also.
Oh, okay.
So the equal pay that school districts use, the one-twelfth of your annual earnings, one-twelfth per month, with three of those being in June, is the case for ninety-nine percent of our employees. So, you know, we, we did look at that from, I believe, a number of perspectives. The expense would still need to hit the twenty-three, twenty-four side. The actual cash movement could be delayed to July twentieth, picking a date, I'm not committing to anything.
Sure.
We are very concerned about people who may budget, because we are feeling the absolute impact of a budget not hitting its goals, very concerned about that. More so, I am extremely concerned about potential impact with the PERS system. The state of Oregon retirement system is very complex, and having, I don't know, it, it could be something we could look into, but I'm very concerned about how it could potentially impact someone's PERS calculations. There, there are a number of pieces, I'm very concerned about the payroll tax implications on it, where what's called the next-day depositor, we have twenty-four hours from payroll to submit all payroll taxes. There are a number of questions that that brought up. Again, number one, it came back to, and I, I'll speak for myself, I believe I speak for all of us, we did not want our employees to bear any of this.
I, just for, Phil, I like the idea of, we're all kind of looking for creative solutions.
Absolutely.
But to your point, that would be my biggest concern, is that decisions outside their ability of fact, and they're expecting.
Yeah.
But I, I appreciate, like, the, the conversation of, like, is there another way to avoid any of the other things that are on the board here, but that would be my concern.
Historical context, actually, we used to issue, issue the, what people refer to as the July and August checks on paper, because people use the drawer system to budget, meaning the checks went in the drawer. We actually got a lot of pushback when we went to three direct deposits. The fraud that we were experiencing with paper checks being mailed was significant. And, you know, so in the past, where cash flow trickled in with one direct deposit in June and two paper checks, and those paper checks kind of floated in over the next two months, once it all became direct deposit, of course, cash flow totally turned around. You know, the expenses were always still hitting in June. The expenses hit the books, they hit the audit in June, but that cash flow really trickled in when those were paper checks, so. But again, the amount of fraud and, you know, theft involved and number, you know, in today's world, honestly, I think most everyone puts their check in the bank with their phone, but, you know, there are, there are concerns with that. But we, that is what we're here tonight to say, we have analyzed as many as we can come up with, there are going to be additional ideas, we want to hear those, but we also have to proceed with the potential of if the tax anticipation note is how the board decides, April fifteenth is our, your in or your out date. So that's, that's what we're going with. Tom?
Yeah, I guess, it looks to me like things are still pointing, I think, is, is to do the tax anticipation note. I, I, but I still have questions about furlough days and the cost of that. So, you know, it costs a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a day to, to run the district, and the idea of the furlough day is you, everyone takes that hit. But now it sounds to me like some employees are eligible for unemployment, and we may have to reimburse the state. So the idea of, you know, we're, we're not, I'm curious as to how much that, that's gonna cost us. So we're gonna, we're gonna still have to write some money out and get no work product out of it. So, so that, to me, I'm, I'm curious as to what that is, so that, that moved down a notch. So it's still looking to me like pointing towards the tax anticipation note, and then, you know, once, once you guys get some room and some breathing space and you get this figured out, sort out the Fed, the Ed X thing and the sub thing, and see, then we can have some, you know, I, I have thoughts on that, but without hard numbers, it's kind of, it's hard to have a discussion on that and after action on that.
Yeah.
So, yeah. In all your spare time.
Thank you. And I do want to clarify, that one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar estimate is salaries and associated payroll costs. We do not save anything on health insurance for a day of furlough. We do not save anything on contracted costs for, set contracted costs for a day of furlough. You know, so you really are looking at just truly what is somebody's wage that they are losing out of their paycheck and the associated costs to that. The rest of our district operating costs, maybe a little less, certainly less power, less heat, you know?
Yeah.
I want to be clear, one hundred and sixty-two thousand is nowhere near the cost to operate a, a district for a day, but that is literally payroll, taxes and PERS. That is all that would be.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I'll probably, I'll probably get...
Yep, just, just wanted to be clear, so it doesn't come up later as a...
Thank you.
Yes.
I've got kind of a, another thought, and you may not have the answer to it, but it seems like everything's on the table right now, and the community has spoken a lot about Ed X, and I, I'm curious about, if we're looking at hard decisions, is there a way to, like, pause that at this point? Or is it a contract that we've entered into, and maybe we start it up next year, maybe we don't? But I think if we're looking at the deficit that we have, like, everything has to be on the table, and then measuring the impacts of that. So, again, I don't expect you to have any answer to that now, but kind of when we circle back.
Derek, thank you for bringing that up. I'm gonna give my two cents. I think that the issues where, you know, positions aren't getting filled means that, I mean, this is just the hard truth, other people are picking up the slack. It makes life harder for everybody when we don't fill positions, and so to then take people's wages with furlough days makes me feel like the employees are, are taking too much on. So I am comfortable with the tan, I mean, I'm, I'm not jumping up and down about it, but it's an instrument that is gonna help us bridge fifteen days of cash flow. It is not, as Aaron pointed out, I don't think it is, optically, for people who aren't digging in, it doesn't look good. I'm willing to shoulder that burden and that criticism. That's where I'm at right now. And so before we move on, Derek, you're my go-to summarizer. Do you, do you want to summarize how we feel in general, unless there's other, other comments?
I, I have one last thing, and then I'll be done.
Okay.
And I, and I just added for transparency for the public of kind of where I stand on a bunch of stuff. I am frustrated at the state. An example that I use is we legalized marijuana. And the promise was the tax revenues from legalized marijuana was gonna go to schools, fire police, and a couple other programs. Years later, we passed Measure One Ten, they cap us at eleven point two-five million dollars for education, those are the programs, and they pocketed approximately close to three hundred million in marijuana tax revenue that should have been going to those other programs. They're making increasingly more difficult to pass, to take care of our buildings, to fund our educators with the inflationary gains that have happened through COVID, what's real at the grocery stores, what it's like to pay your bills, and they're not backfeeding us the amount that you guys all deserve. So please lean on the state a little bit. I ask that in unity to help us all for the kids and the teachers. As far as the difficulties we got coming up... As far as the difficulties we got coming up, um, I was being honest. Entitlements can be a difficult subject sometimes because they're there and they're easy to take and we're, we feel like we need them, but it also places a lot of extra stress on your colleagues sometimes. So, gosh, I'm getting into some crazy stuff, aren't I? Um, I, obviously it's expensive and I definitely, if we need it, take it. But I just had a baby and of course, I own my own business. I don't work, I don't get paid. I don't have sick days. I don't have, um, I don't even have health insurance. Cause it's not there yet. And so, um, it's just, right now, we're in a tough bind. And I know the classrooms are tough, trust, golly, man. Behavior and just all the stress, I get it. But it does come with a cost. So I'm not, I'm just stating out like, please go at the state and ask them to help us out more than they have. You're asking of us, we're listening and we're trying to help to the best of our ability. I ask you, did you ask that of the state? And, uh, if, I think together we can just do this. We're gonna try to put a bond up. Gosh, dolly, I, I think we can actually do it. Cause I'm crazy enough to be optimistic, so those are my last thoughts. And I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, no, that's good. That's good. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, um, just as a reiteration to our staff, and I, and when I say this, I'm not assuming that, that in any way you're not. So please, I preface that. But as we continue to make our interventions in our budget currently and going into next year, please really lean on our principals. Um, they are our, 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 our building experts. They get direct input from our teachers, from staff. Um, please listen to them. They work hard every day to, to, you know, um, you know, rally their buildings to support their staff. They have their ear to the ground on that. And I think we really need to rely on them and give them some freedoms that if, when we, when we are making some budget interventions or budget decisions, really rely on their expertise and their experience here in the district. We have some really, really outstanding, um, principals and we really need to listen to them.
All right, Derek, are you ready?
Are we looking to provide our final kind of-
I, I want you to, you're so good at summarizing.
No, no pressure.
Nope.
I think first, again, everybody in the room, um, to our district office. I think, again, the reason we're all here is because we care about the kids in the district. We're not in a great place. Uh, we've spoken adamantly about we are going to dig into that. We're not forgetting about that, but do have to deal with the situation that's kinda been laid at our feet. And so I think what I've heard from my colleagues is none of us love this plan, but we think it's the, um, a reasonable option to move forward, preserving school days, avoiding layoffs, avoiding furloughs, uh, keeping our teachers and staff and everybody working in the classrooms where they should be. And at the end of the day, I think we think it has the least impact, uh, on our young people. So if my colleagues are in agreement, I think the direction would be to move forward with this plan while simultaneously follow up with some of the tough questions we've had, so.
Yeah, at least by budget committee season, right? Because that's when we get to talk about the planned budget for, for next year, so. Y'all agree on Derek's summary?
Yep.
All right, I hope that gives you what you need.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is our policy update sesh section. We've got, um, a couple of second reads. We already had one opportunity to discuss, uh, this, these two. Um, is there additional conversation about these two policies? All right. Uh, now it's time for our second public comment period. So if you would like to speak during public comment and are attending virtually, use the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you are attending in person, please approach the public comment table located in front of the board. So I'll go with people in the room first. Is there anybody who would like to approach the board? I'm not seeing anybody. Is there anybody online?
Yes, there's a couple people.
Okay.
Uh, someone with the initials S.C.
Okay, so can we promote them, Daniel? S.C. Hello, S.C., can you identify yourself and your relationship to the district? Hi there, we can see you. Can you hear us?
She's muted.
Oh, can you me, uh, on her end or our end?
She's muted.
Oh, can you, can you unmute? We're not able to hear you. Gonna give you one more minute maybe to try to figure that out. Daniel, are we doing everything we can on our end? Yeah, we're still not able. I think maybe you've muted yourself. She says no, she's not. Daniel? Help? We don't have a protocol for this. All right, S.C., we're gonna move on to another person and try to figure out what the problem is. And we will put you in the queue, um, if we can figure that out. Otherwise, you are able to send us an email. Thank you so much.
And we do have, uh, Matt Plummer to speak again.
Okay. Hmm, go ahead and promote Matt then.
Hello?
Hi, Matt.
Hi there. Uh, Matt Plummer, parent of a couple of students in the district.
All right.
Um, I just wanted to follow up is, is all. Um, earlier was frustrated, uh, confused, a little angry, and, um, everybody that spoke since then, I've been impressed with. And, uh, Kim, I didn't realize today was day one. Uh, well done. I guess it gets better from here. But, yeah, I, I think it was a great explanation of, of where we are, you know, likely reasons that we are where we are. And, uh, I like the, the open discussion of some of the options to get away from where we are. Um, so, well done. Um, I, I do need to share that, uh, I find it interesting that we heard from a lot of people, but there were some folks, or a person that we didn't hear anything from that, uh, in my mind, I would say is one of the more responsible folks. Um, but, uh, I'll, I'll just leave that there. One thing that I would ask is, you know, at some point to look at the, the attendance policy. I know that we had a couple situations with one of our sons that, um, he was going to be late and, but was at school by like 9:30 or so, but was still marked absent. And I know that the accumulation of absence from an individual impacts the money that comes in and the reflection of, you know, is that individual actually enrolled? Um, so just something to put on the radar is all. Um, and then the last thing is, uh, you know, I liked that there was some frustration shared with the state. Um, I am very unimpressed with the grant handling from the state. And I'm curious if there are any options to pursue those funds, um, you know, aggressively. And, uh, cause it seems like if funds are promised and they're not being delivered, uh, that's not necessarily on the person accepting the funds. So just wanted to put that out there. And, um, just to go full cheesy mode and bring the, the girls' basketball team back into it. They were behind.
Thirty seconds.
The best story out there is the comeback story. And they did it and it's amazing. And, um, so I think there's an opportunity for a pretty good comeback story with the district and its budget. So hopefully it, uh, ends with a trophy, I guess.
Thank you, Matt.
That is all. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Appreciate you. Um, is S.C. back? All right, while we're waiting for a potential comeback from S.C., is there anybody else in the audience? Come on, come forward, please. And you've probably figured out the drill. Please state your name, your relationship to the district, and if you're speaking on behalf of yourself or part of a group.
My name is Garan Lamro. I was employed in the district, uh, starting in 2007 and most recently at Central Howell and Robert Frost. I'll have a son in kindergarten in the district next year. I just wanted to, um, share my appreciation for the board members who were willing to ask some, uh, pointed questions tonight. I feel like that has been sorely missing. And while I do know that the board has to solve the problem that the district is in because of its deficit, I think it's been maybe failed to, um, fully, I think the district has, the board has fully failed to acknowledge its role in this deficit and the district office's role in this deficit. This didn't happen by accident. I know that the feedback about edX has been received by many of you for a long time. And I'm just wondering how at this point, so many years later, do we not know the full cost? I am upset personally. I'm mostly really sad that my son, who is gonna be in kindergarten next year, will have a worse education because of the deficit, uh, the deficit and the decisions and the way that the money has been invested by this district office and overseen by the board. And my hope is for some genuine oversight for all of our kids, for all of our teachers. A great question was asked earlier that didn't get answered by, um, Josh Ort about the staffing levels. And I don't think that you got a, a straight answer yet. And I think that's something that we really need to know. Are these cuts permanent? Because I don't think, um, from what I'm hearing, a new normal sounds like less staffing. If that's the plan, a new normal. I'd also like to share my appreciation for Kim, who on her first day on the job has done an amazing job explaining decisions that don't seem to have been hers, um, just problems that she's inherited. Thank you.
Thank you, Garan.
Thank you.
Is S.C. still, got their hand up?
I do not see a hand raised.
Okay. Anybody else from the audience? All right, we will move on then. Uh, number 14, future agenda item request. Is there anybody who has a future agenda item request? I think we've got some. Yeah, we've talked about a few things tonight. All right, well, then without objection, meeting adjourned.